Okay, I'd like to open our Select Board meeting of June 13th, 2022. And this segment will be very short because we're going to be moving to executive session. And in fact, could I have a motion to that effect?
Move to enter executive session in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager, to return to regular session.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Ms. Ackerman?
Myself, aye.
Okay, thank you, and we are now in executive session. Okay? All right, so we were able to end our executive session sooner than expected, so we're going to resume open session and deal with a few non-timed items before we get to the timed items on our agenda this evening. So could I get a motion to resume open session? Or do we even need to do that?
We...
We're back from executive session, we're resumed.
But I can move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, please, yes, please approve this consent calendar.
Right, move to approve the consent calendar, it's on the agenda.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now we have the, well, I think we'll wait on the interim town manager's report till 6:30? Mine's on.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, you just called the consent calendar. So what I would like to do instead is to move directly to our liaison reports. So for the Select Board's liaison report, who would like to go first?
I will.
All right, go ahead, Terry.
All right. So I went to the PEG Access meeting, and they, as you know, are getting bids for the franchise agreement that lasts 10 years. They put out the RFQ all over the place, but only got two bids. And they're going to be interviewing these candidates on Thursday, June 16th. And they also gave the annual PEG Access awards to Scott Hopkinson, Court Booth, Mark Polly, and Erin Stevens. The 2229 Main Street has been really busy figuring out how to deal with risk, and how they're going to recommend the Select Board deal with risk. And they have sent us a letter. There is also an NMI StarMet report online from a year and a half ago that I think we should all review, because they're coming in July 11th. There are contractors going to be making a presentation about the cleanup to date, the risk discussion, including insurance. And we might be scheduling a site visit. I know that when Linda was chair, almost two years ago, we had a site visit. Is anybody interested in doing a site visit?
I would.
I think I'd go again even. Okay, so I'll tell them to proceed, and they'll let us know. Today, there was a Personnel Study Task Force meeting. They will be holding a public forum probably the last week of August or in September, inviting the Select Board, the Personnel Board, and employees. They're going to be in touch with you, Matt, this is not exactly the way.
Yeah, not exactly.
No, they want to do it that way. And then I went to three other events, the Housing Production Plan Forum, the CSEC Electronic Vehicle Charging Event at Harvey Wheeler, and the Sanborn School Civics Day hosted by the League of Women Voters.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to present next?
I'll go.
Okay, Mary.
First thing is DPW. DPW is going to have no rate increase for solid waste of the pay-as-you-throw program in FY23, despite the fact that they've got increased costs. Instead, what they're going to do is they're going to use their fund balance. So they have a pretty healthy fund balance, and they're going to use some of that to fund the operations in FY23.
All right.
The other thing I learned is that they need cooperation with, they're hoping with the Transportation Advisory Committee, because they're running into some issues on Hubbard Street regarding markings for the Complete Streets Program. So they're asking for, is there a town policy? And can they collaborate with Transportation Advisory Committee, maybe among others, to get that, a townwide policy for that type of striping? The other thing we talked about briefly is the Nagog Filtration Plant. There's a working group that's being formed to bring that to town meeting in the fall. Alan mentioned the cost of approximately $30 million.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Wow.
The Recre... yeah, yeah. The Recreation Commission, they're beginning their strategic plan. The other good news is that the BD Center for FY22 is coming in about a half a million dollars over budget on their revenue side. So that's good news, but they're going to be using that money, they think, to do a lot of the deferred maintenance.
Well, but that's still good.
That's really good.
That's really good news.
It's great news, it's really good news, so they can catch up. So they'll probably still show a loss for the year, but they're going to be catching up on deferred maintenance. The NRC is going to, I went to the NRC, they're going to start the dredging of Warner Pond in the fall. I went to the Economic Vitality Committee, there's over... And finally, White Pond. I would like to inform this board that I intend to re, or modify the charge for the White Pond Advisory Committee. And I'm envisioning a process where I will get input from the White Pond Advisory Committee, from town staff, from other departments, as relevant. I will bring that back to White Pond Advisory Committee, get their input, and then write a draft, come to the Select Board as an agenda item. I'm thinking probably in the fall, we can review it and hopefully approve it.
Okay, thank you.
So related to White Pond, I thought it was a good addition on the website that it's been reworked, and now the NRC, Department of Natural Resources is represented, White Pond Advisory is represented, and one other, the...
The Rec...
Maybe the Rec Department, but it...
As far as beach openings and closures.
It at least expanded the view of the number of stakeholders in that.
Yes, good.
Okay. Who would like to be next? Don't...
Yeah, I can go next. I met with the Concord Commission on Disability. They were pleased to know that some additional handicap parking has been added to the Stowe Street Parking Lot as they're renovating that parking lot. However, they still feel as though the library has not done their best in addressing the best location for handicap parking. You may recall that that's been an issue for some time. They are in the process of considering new volunteer to fill some vacancies. And I think that, and they're looking forward to meeting Kelly Hebert, who was unable to attend this most recent meeting. The Zoning Board of Appeals had a number of applications that they, that were fairly routine. I think it may be of interest to others, however, that on August 8th through 14th, the International Women's Tennis Tournament will be held at the Thoreau Club.
Wow.
And so...
Which will probably have some traffic impacts, I see.
Yeah, no kidding.
When is that?
August 8th through 14th. And it's really the last three days that they'll be selling tickets, and they're going to have 350 tickets that they'll be selling for that. And they have, they had an elaborate planning document and went through all of that, and they've really thought of everything, including police detail, traffic, and a number of issues. The Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust met again. And, let's see, where are we there? There had been a meeting with National Park Service regarding potential use of some houses that they're going to make available for rental. And the trust was, a couple people were exploring whether or not it might work to use some of that housing for affordable housing. It's at the very beginning stages of discussion, and there's lots to be explored before anything else happens there. And other than that, I think that most of the meeting was dealing with requirements of the bylaw reviewing since the appropriation came in from town meeting, reviewing other requirements that the bylaw has in terms of organization, accountability, chart of accounts, and all kinds of things.
Yeah, Mary?
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Linda, does the Affordable Housing Trust come into the Select Board annually and give us like a sources and uses of funds report?
So this will be, they will.
They will, okay, because I'm thinking with 6:50 going to Assabett Bluff, I'm wondering how much money they have left.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just was curious, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and that is the other issue right now. The closing for Assabett River Bluff property is expected on July 29th, I believe. I think that's correct. And so the trust, one of the things the trust is working on right now is making sure that we have the right legal protections in place for the committed $650,000 to meet the requirements that were agreed to by the trust. So that's what I meant by putting in place certain things that need to be taken care to make sure. And I think, and like several others around the table, I did attend the Housing Production, the Housing Forum, and that was well-attended, with over 50 people attending, and a lot of information was presented. That is now on the website for people who want to see the actual presentation and other materials that were presented.
Okay, thank you. Henry, do you have liaison report to make?
I have a couple.
You can pull the mic right up.
Well, are the mics on, because I, or is it my hearing aid?
They like to be like just inches away.
But I can't hear what anybody else is saying, and I wonder if it's me, or am I hearing...
No, I agree, I think everybody speak up because of the air conditioning.
There we go. Turning it down a bit.
That's a big help.
That's a big help, okay, no more white noise.
Then you're going to have to swelter, right?
Yeah, no, well, it's not too bad now.
Too bad.
Well, I do, I, it's hard for me to be as comprehensive as some of the other people who get to other committees, but having this committee and the 250th Committee every Thursday night, which conflicts with my Agriculture Committee, and the, I have conflicts with some of the others, but, so I can report on the Public Ceremonies Committee, which I have been pursuing, partly because I'm interested in the events that they sponsor, but also because I am interested in the cooperative, the resources of them working with the 250th Committee because of having them be the means to run a lot of the events, such as the parades and so on. And so I think that they've been struggling for a while, and so I now have found out with the efforts of Town Clerk's Office that there are now three vacancies on that committee. And there actually may be more soon. And so that's something where I am going to want to have the board play a role in reviving that committee, making appropriate appointments to that committee. We had a decent Patriot's Day Parade this year, which was a big, which was kind of a big comeback. We had a pretty good Memorial Day ceremony. Four of us were in West Concord, but I would like to see more people. The ceremony in Concord Center was much more substantial, although it was a different kind of an event. But I would certainly like to see in the future more dignitaries attending, standing on the reviewing stand in the Concord Center when we have the next Memorial Day event. But that's something we're going to work on and get, get those things, you know, what can I say?
In some cases reinstated, right?
Reinstated, but built up, you know, and be reinst, you know, reinvigorated might be the right word. Because, I mean, with the, with the last couple of years, with people being used to not being with other people and not, and not having these events, they forgot about how to do them. So with the, with the 250th Committee, you may have noticed on the town website, we now have a new presence. I have rewritten, or I've rewritten the material, and we have listed the members, and it has been, it has been placed in the alphabet, not under T for "two," spelled "T", but has been put in the alphabet under the number 250, which does mean that from the bottom, it has risen from the bottom of the list to the top. And there's a substantial description of what we do there. We have had meetings every week. We are now almost fully staffed for the original nine-plus members of the Executive Committee. They have all been assigned functions, and now we are in the process of recruiting people to serve on subcommittees. And we have about 30 people who are now being, you know, recruited for things like finance, for events, for communications invitations, you name it, all of the things that need to be done. And we've made good contacts with the Concord Armory, and with the Town of Lexington, and with some of the performers, like at the Middlesex County Volunteers, which is one of the premier reenactment groups. And getting people signed up to be part of that whole event. And thinking about, very importantly, about getting 2023 and '24 to be a warm-up. So that's going very well, and you will find our minutes on the town website, where they're going on the website. They're unvarnished, they're not all that discreet or filtered, and they are, they are as they come, and they're on very promptly. All of our minutes are there, okay, promptly.
Henry, you said that you have about 30 people who have applied to be on subcommittees. Is that enough? Are you still looking for more?
Yep.
So what should people do if they want to see a list of the subcommittees?
It's on the website, it's on the town website.
All right, so it's the first committee listed on the, on the, under Committees.
Under 250.
And all of these subcommittees are listed?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and then...
And it says, and it, there is actually a statement at the end that says, if you want to join us, here's how you do it.
Great.
And we have, we have a, we have our own email address on the town site. And so if people want to go to the town website and look under Committees, look under 250, and you'll find a lot there. And if you go on Minutes and Agendas, you will find our minute from every meeting we had.
Okay.
Okay, so for the benefit of the public and those that are in attendance who are curious what's going on here, we were able to conclude our executive session early. And so what we're doing is we're taking a few of the non-timed items from our agenda, which in this case, we started with liaison reports from the board. And I just want to quickly report out that some of these are kind of old news, but we haven't had a liaison report since, I think, before Memorial Day. That I did attend the organizational meeting for this fiscal year of the Finance Committee. Peggy Briggs is the new chair, and they made, you know, the assignments of observers. And Christine Reynolds has continued as our observer from last year for the Select Board. Then I also attended the Middle School Building Committee, and as you saw, we distributed last time in the packet the update from the Middle School Building Committee. Actually, a couple of things since then, while there's the, the schedule change, so they're pulling up the move-in date to February break is the goal for 2025. They're also, and so that reduces the overall construction timeframe. And that, secondly, there is a new estimate that is expected, financial estimate that is expected at the end of June. So we will have an opportunity to review that. And then, and then we went over a lot of the sort of design evolution and details of the project, it continues to go pace. The school committee met, and there was a presentation, a review of Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Plan, a five-year plan with the first year much more detailed set of goals. And then, let's see, what other, I think those are the main highlights, there are a few, oh, well, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission met, and it has agreed to write a letter in reference to the Metco Parents' Demands relative to the school district. So those are the biggest updates. I'd like now, in just the last couple of minutes we've got before 6:30, and where we resume our sort of timed agenda, to go through committee nominations and appointments. So...
Okay, move to nominate.
We're not moving on the nominations, right? Just announce the nominations.
Sorry. Okay, the nominations are Lois Suarez to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee Board, and Kate Yoder to the Economic Vitality Committee.
Actually, I'm throwing Kate Yoder because I learned that she's the Chair of the West Concord Cultural District.
Oh.
And she's doing a fabulous job there, so we want to leave her there. So I'm going to withdraw this nomination.
Okay.
Okay. We still want more energy in the Economic Vitality Committee, but we'll seek others. Yeah. Okay, and then...
All right, move to appoint Holly Cratsley of 10 Edmunds Road to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2026. Patricia Hopkins of 65 Dalton Street to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2026. Reappoint John Sodden to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2023. Reappoint Nick Pappas to the Natural Resources Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. Reappoint Michael Capizzi to the Historic Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2025. Reappoint Alan Bogosian to the Historical Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2025. Reappoint Melissa Saulfield to the Historical Commission for a term to expire May 31st, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I just have a brief point of discussion. Henry, you had mentioned that for the 250th, where we have designated roles for members, that these members had their assigned roles. And I was just curious, I don't know if I need a full rundown or anything, but I'm just interested in probably more, most importantly, which roles are still open? And these folks have been assigned there.
There are two, there are two spots that are still open. And I don't recall what they are.
Okay, well, you can get me...
But, and also...
Is there, on the website, can people see those assignments?
No, no.
That would be a good addition to make.
We've also, we have, since, since the categories that have been given to us in the charge are ones that several of our people would fall into several.
Sure, you have a little bit of latitude.
So we have been moving people around a little bit when we get a new person who will fit in one that is already taken by another, and we move them. So we move people around in those categories.
Okay, but it would be great to see what those assignments are.
And those aren't, those, those categories are not entirely consistent with the subcommittees, although each...
No, and that's fine.
Yeah, so if people are interested in a subcommittee, it, I can put up on the website the list of subcommittees and the...
I think that would be key, as well as the category assignments for the members.
That would be great.
Look, the more, the bigger the presence we have on the town website, the better.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion of our appointments? All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
I don't think we had a second.
Yes, we did.
Oh, good. Okay, super.
Okay, so I think that at this point, we're ready then to turn to our major agenda topics for this evening, and we'll start with the interim town manager's report.
Thank you very much. This Thursday at 5:30 PM, we are having our volunteer appreciation reception. This is something that was done regularly before COVID, and we are getting back to that. So that is here in the hearing room, again, at 5:30. And we welcome any Concord resident who has or is currently serving in an elected or appointed position on a town board or committee. Under the department updates, Officer Nicholas Benoit completed the 80-hour Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, or NEMLEC, police motorcycle training. There were 18 participants in that, only eight of them actually passed the qualifying course, and our officer, Benoit, was one of those. So that was quite an achievement. Also, Sergeant Michael Burgess, who has been a longtime member of the Concord Police Department, is a, an instructor, and he participated in that training. So we had, we had two people involved in that training. The department is completing the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, or POSTC, recertification process. This is a process that is required where all sworn personnel must undertake mandatory training, and they are actually participate in an interview with the chief on a periodic and regular basis in order to essentially certify them for continued service in their position. So this year, we, we do this on an alphabetical basis, so this year we're working with officers with last name beginning with A through H. And we do expect that all of the officers will be recertified. So a couple of you already mentioned the Housing Production Plan last week, that was very well-attended. This Thursday, there are two opportunities to hear more about the future of the Assabett River Bridge and Trail project in a public forum, one scheduled at 9:30 AM, one at 5:30 PM. Both events are being held in the Baker's Cafe at 300 Baker Ave. We are doing some additional work to, to plant native pollinator plantings along the Switchback Trail to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. I mentioned this at the last meeting, we had a group of fifth graders from the Willard School did some work with our Natural Resources Division on that project. An item which I think is probably new to this report, the Landmark Recovery of Concord Center at 785 Main Street, I'm not sure we've talked about that before. This is the site of the former Walden Rehabilitation and Nursing Center. It has completed its extensive interior renovations totaling $1.82 million. The project started before COVID in the fall of 2019, and is, again, now being completed. They, a certificate of occupancy was issued on June 9th, and the center is looking to open in January of 2020. was issued on June 9. And the center is looking to open in January of 2023 pending licensure by the state. And this is a private rehabilitation facility specializing in the treatment of substance abuse. There is an update in the packet on COVID statistics. We've got tracking the last three weeks and as you can see, cases are, are down substantially. There also in the packet is the, I think it's the monthly report of broadband. And I did include this. This obviously is much more extensive than, than the updates that you see. But I'm not sure that the board has, has seen, at least at this meeting, a broadband update. And Jason Bulger, our IT Director, is here this evening and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure he's here right now, but he will be here later. And I just wanted to close and, and mention that the, the report is, it's not necessarily, the intention is not necessarily to provide an update on every single department or division on a weekly basis. We're really at this point relying on departments and divisions to submit information. But as I've mentioned to you before, our new executive assistant is starting this week. She's actually starting on Wednesday. One of her tasks is going to be, to take over this report and, and she will be able to, to be a bit more proactive. And for departments that we're not hearing from as regularly, making sure that we're including information in the report about them. Obviously, everybody is very busy. Some, some departments, it's easier for them to provide this information because maybe they're doing it for, for other venues. And, and so we do expect to have more and regular information going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board for our interim town manager? Okay. So just from the chair's remarks point of view, first thing is that a few weeks ago, we had signed proclamation for Race Amity Day, which is the second Sunday in June, based upon Massachusetts legislation. And Charlie Baker's, Governor Charlie Baker had encouraged municipalities to hold events. This event in Concord was held at Alcott Elementary School. I attended and read the proclamation. Also, we had Andrew Nyameke, the DEI Director for the schools, who gave a presentation there. And I thought it was a wonderful event. It was a potluck that included dishes from around the world. I think that there are opportunities to maybe embrace this kind of as a, as an official town event, perhaps in the future, something to consider. Also, just to note that in our executive session, the board has concluded the discussion of the contract terms and all. So we have agreement that we will be presenting to our interim town manager for her consideration. And we would expect to be able to come to terms and to vote upon that agreement at our next meeting on June 27. So with that, if there aren't any other questions, I would like to call up our presenters on the next agenda topic, the one scheduled for 6:35 PM, which is the Fiber Broadband Task Force Final Report Review. So please identify yourself and your role and make your report.
Hi, I'm Mark Cowell, 668 Nerznak Hill Road, Chairperson for the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force. And with me in the room here is Gail Hire, who is also a member of the task force. And not sure, but the, the other three members I'll just mention briefly are Gordon Brockway, who also serves on the Light Board, or just completed his term on the Light Board, David Hessel, representing homeowners associations and businesses, and Scott Hopkinson, who is also a member of the Peg Access Committee. And I know this is going to be a little bit of an eye chat, eye chart for you guys, so.
Well, I think our packet includes a copy of the report now, so.
And I might suggest that, that you move to page two in that.
Follow along on our own, yeah.
I think that's 13 on the, on the, in the packet. If you're, if you're following along at home, I did check to confirm that it was there. Okay. So the mission for the Fiber Completion Task Force was set out by Article 41 at the 2021 Town Meeting and a charge that was provided to us by your board. The mission in a nutshell was to investigate fiber completion and propose solutions for how we might extend fiber throughout the service area. The timeframe was beginning in September of 2021 with an expected completion by town meeting of 2022. So here we are, a couple of weeks after town meeting with a, with a final report. So we were active under a very compressed timeframe and we met basically weekly throughout that time period in order to try to get to where we are. Our final report is posted on the webpage for the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force for anyone following along at home that wants to look at the full document. And moving on to my third slide or the next page in your packet, we really took a, an approach that involved first trying to identify where in Concord the fiber network, which is owned and operated by CMLP, did not go. Tried to understand the parcels and specifically who was not served by that and came to some interesting conclusions about that. And I'll share more of that in a minute. Then the secondary objective was to understand the costs that might be associated with, with completion and to look into whether or not it would be practical to expect that that might be able to be completed over time. So that led us to looking at the finances of the broadband operation as well as the underlying telecommunications finances. So our key findings on the fourth slide were that Concord does have significant gaps in its, in its fiber network. Over 20% of the premises, meaning parcels, are not served. And certain types of parcels are disproportionately not served. And it turns out that generally up to 50% of those parcels containing multiple dwelling units, in other words, rental properties, condominiums, or businesses that are occupying multiple, multiple units within a parcel are much more likely to not have access to the fiber network than the typical single-family home. And that's a artifact of the construction that was done. Significant financial resources would be required to address all these gaps. It would run into the millions of dollars. We did not have the resources to make specific estimates on that. But I think that what we were able to establish was that there are a range of, of costs associated with different types of solutions. And while the total number would be very substantial, it's also possible to take small slices of that project on, at reasonable costs and potentially within a, within a programmatic way. We did look at the broadband service finances to try to understand what resources might be available. And we were, we discovered that there are some, some things that, that probably need some additional review to, before we can really be clear on whether or not the broadband service itself is generating enough cash to do that. And primarily, that has to do with an internal loan between the electric side and the telecommunications side, which was first surfaced in the audit that was completed in 2020. And probably needs some verification because it represents a fairly substantial sum. And we'll come back to that in a moment. Our recommendations break down in seven specific areas. On the next slide, you see the first four. Policies, which are basically decisions and goals and focus that need to be made. We think that those are most appropriately made by the elected officials, yourselves, the representatives of the citizenry, like the Light Board, or town meeting itself in some cases, if we're talking about debt financing, for example, for major construction, which is not part of what we're looking at here, but would be the right place. There is a need for additional metrics to manage the business. This provides the data upon which decisions can be made. There is a need and in fact, has been some substantial improvement that we'd like to note in terms of the governance. The Light Board is, is looking at broadband much more regularly. Carrie just referred to the monthly broadband reports that's being produced now, which is extremely helpful and, and really, I'd say, under development. We've had a chance to discuss that with, with Jason Bulger and it looks like an improvement in that direction. And finally, strategic planning by the staff. In other words, the plans and intentions for expansion of the service, subscription, growth, and so forth, need to be looked at and, and reviewed both on a tactical basis annually and also on a somewhat longer-term basis every four or five years as part of our recommendation. The last three areas are specific to the financials for broadband. And they represent three things that we have determined are near-term decisions that should be made. One represents the ARPA, the Pandemic Recovery Funds. We believe that there is a, a case to be made for the fact that broadband did suffer revenue losses during the, during the pandemic time period. That can be documented and should be under consideration for some of the allocation of those funds. The payment in lieu of franchise, which is relatively new line item on the broadband budget, which represents a transfer between the, the telecommunications activity in broadband to the Miniman Media Network on an annual basis, appears to be unnecessary and also potentially creates a drag on, on telecommunications ability to invest in other things. And then lastly, the debt schedules, particularly the repayment of the internal loan, appears aggressive. And so those three things are important decisions to be made in the near term to reconcile the financial progress that we expect to be made in order to facilitate any, any future capital investment in fiber expansion. Regarding the investments in fiber expansion, a budget process and a capital program that focuses on that and uses the, the metrics and the goals that we just discussed and internalizes that into the budget process would be, would be ideal. And so we have some recommendations in that area. And finally, we do recognize that some of the policies, particularly the undergrounding policy and the techniques that are being used today to extend the fiber network may be more expensive than necessary. And so we're recommending an ongoing focus on what are the best practices for delivering fiber, both overhead and underground, and whether or not there might be any ability to, to do that a little bit more efficiently based on the learnings of other municipalities that are forming similar services. So those are our, the areas of our recommendations that are in the report. The next couple of slides detail some of the specific findings. The seventh slide titled Status of the Fiber Network is based on data from the, from the geographic information system. And what it really shows is that there are 9,000 units or, that are in the town system. And it shows which, how they're categorized. Some of these particular parcels, for example, open space parcels or undeveloped parcels, obviously, do not need to be served. And so we excluded them when calculating what the percentage of, of served parcels are. So there are 6,131 premises in the master address table that are served and that represents about 78.6%. But as I mentioned earlier, only 50% of the multiple dwelling units and multi-family units are served. And the converse of that is they make up 81% of those units and premises that are not served. So if we're looking from an equity perspective, who's getting fiber and, and how, we, we can very quickly identify that as one of the main groups. The slide with the pie chart, it's listed as page eight here, shows a little bit more graphically what that, what that data looks like. And what we did was we combined the, the data tagging that was available to us with the maps and were able to identify 52 geographically identifiable areas that lack fiber. And those tend to be these places where there's listed for fiber, no fiber in the street, or fiber in the street but not available, or no access from Concord. So page nine has a view of that. Those people who want to examine this in more detail can access the link in the, in the PDF to bring up a map viewer themselves and take a look at that. The, the link for that viewer is also on the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force website. But the, the two identified images here give a sense of what those, what those areas really look like. The one on the left is Alfred's, calls out Alfred Circle, which is a cul-de-sac off Madison Drive. And you can see what this is, is an area where single-family homes were not served because it was, there was no conduit available to underground the fiber in an underground area. So that represents one of the more expensive areas to try to serve because eventually the road needs to be built up. It's interesting that this is, this, that happens to also be a road that's part of the annual road program this year. But the opportunities to get underneath these roads, this one happens to already have electric services buried and put in fiber come around very infrequently. And that's why there's a need for a capital program because we repaved this street, it could be 20 years or more before any of those properties have the opportunity. The, the diagram on the right calls out another area, Abbott Lane, which is more typical of a multi-dwelling unit. This is a subdivision which has 30 units across two parcels. And in that case, the development didn't have access to the fiber. And so that would be an example of a different kind of, of property. But you can see these on the map. There are 52 of them. They vary in size. The data from, in a tabular form is listed on the next page. And it gives you a sense of how many, when you see a small number of parcels, for example, two parcels on line one with Abbott Lane and 42 units, that's the, the sort of multi-dwelling rental or condo kind of situation coming out versus the, the next group called Group Two, which is 39 units on 39 parcels is, is the single-family home situation. And there's a mix of both. The distance, so there's a relatively modest 1,090 feet, 95 feet of fiber needed to be pulled in in order to get to the Abbott Lane thing. So you can imagine that that's a relatively less expensive project than pulling, you know, over a mile of fiber to, to reach those 39 parcels in Abbott Lane. And that's just a good way to sort of characterize kind of what we were able to find by examining the data. And our suggestion is that more planning and coordination be done around these kinds of projects so that there's, they're essentially sort of shovel-ready. We know what the, what the work would be. And when they come up in the road program or in the course of other business, it might be possible. course of other business, it might be possible to address them. So I alluded to some of the financial conditions that are important to understand here. And so the next notes on Concord broadband business points out a few things. One very important thing to recognize is that subscriber growth, in other words, the number of people subscribing to the town's broadband service has slowed dramatically since early 2020. The pandemic may be the cause, but it also may not be the cause. There was quite a bit of discussion about whether or not we might have reached some natural saturation point, something referred to as take rate. Today, 25% of the premises that have the fiber available subscribe as of November 21. But that could be compared to Comcast's subscription rate, which is approximately 56%, which is not an apples to apples comparison because Comcast is cable TV, and that's where we have data on this, this is internet service. But it's useful to sort of understand that. A customer could easily have both or neither, which is also useful to know. Our estimate for the contract value of a new subscription is approximately $16,000 a year. That's useful to understand because typically the investment to get to a new subscriber has been less than $2,000. So our suggestion is that it may be possible to relax the criteria for how much broadband spends to get to customers in order to facilitate them. Because what we're hearing is undergrounding, the cost of actually getting access to the fiber can sometimes be an issue. However, it's also worth noting, and our last bullet here mentions this, there are new competitors in the marketplace that didn't exist in 2014 when you started this. Specifically, low earth orbit satellite systems like Starlink are direct competition to the Concord Light Broadband Service and need to be understood. Okay. So the next slide is details on the revenue projection, revenue loss estimates that we came up with. These are based on two different ways of looking at the historical growth rate of the broadband system through 2019. Considering the years 2017 through 2019, it grew at an average growth rate of 14% a year or 195 subscriptions per year. Using those, applying those two metrics, you come out with slightly different estimates, but the more conservative one, which suggests that had all other things being equal, 195 new subscribers would have been recognized in 2020 and another 195 in 2021, we come to a cumulative total of $240,000 in lost revenue, which we're suggesting that should be considered when allocating the pandemic relief funds. The final couple of slides we have here are the recommendations and responsibilities table. So these are a more detailed breakdown of the recommendations. They start on the 13th slide. And there are six key recommendations that we'd like to call out. The first one has to do with establishing a goal of universal access and defining what that means exactly. We feel that that's up to us as citizens to do, and there needs to be a discussion about that because really it comes down to who's going to pay for it and how. We think it's important to do from an equity perspective, but we also recognize that that's going to have to come back to the citizen-driven process. There are two key business tracking recommendations on this first page that are also highlighted. Installations, in other words, keeping track of how fast is this system growing and is that growth capable of providing the revenue to pay for additional construction is really a function of installations, and so that needs to be carefully monitored. And the governance of those metrics, which is all really underway, I've had a chance to discuss this with Carrie and with Jason, and I think the light board is already on this, but those are key focus areas. Turning to the recommendations responsibility table, page two, we've already mentioned these, so I won't go into too much detail, but the ARPA relief funds, as I covered earlier, we think that would be a very important infusion of financial resources that could potentially put the broadband fiber extensions in position, for example, to keep up with the road program as early as next year because they could begin to look at what roads are going to get rebuilt and plan to do that if they had some funds for that. Today, they do not. Confirmation of this internal loan, which we mentioned earlier, it's in the amount of $1.8 million, and it was discovered or came to light as part of the audit findings in 2020. That repayment schedule is established by CMLP policy to be repaid over 10 years. If that finding that the internal loan, in fact, exists and does need to be repaid in that sort of a schedule, then it's going to very substantially reduce the resources that might be available for fiber extension. And so we need to recognize that. And more generally, our observation is that the debt financing schedules that have been used, especially in the early going, were pretty accelerated. Broadband's already paid back $950,000 of the original town meeting authorization to borrow, which is quite impressive. But if that has led to an internal indebtedness to the electric company, then maybe that should have been done a little longer. And so we're recommending a review of those elements, first among equals with the rest of the things. So what are the specific actions that are recommended? On page 15, adopting a universal access goal, this will need to be informed by the financial state, so it may need to hold a little bit for that, but we think it's important to do to give staff guidance. Managing the business carefully to its growth and financial return so that we're really sure what's going on in there. Pursuing grants and sources of funds like the ARPA recovery funds, like removing the payment in lieu of franchise, which we strongly believe that broadband may not be able to afford if it has, in fact, been running a cash deficit. Addressing the cost of installation by looking at possibly more investment and also looking at ways to reduce the cost by using other techniques for burying fiber and, in general, learning from municipalities are recommended actions. So with that, hopefully I came in pretty close to the time you allocated.
Yeah, for the whole thing, but thanks so much, Mark. It was a very comprehensive report, and actually, considering how comprehensive it was, you made a pretty efficient pass through it. So I'd like to now turn to other members of the board for your questions to see what your initial reaction and response might be to this report. Mary, or I think I saw Mary first.
Yes, because I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you. I was the finance committee observer to this committee, and I've watched them work really hard over a long period of time. So as far as commitment and hard work, you guys are great. I read your report, and I agree with some of your recommendations, especially about getting integrated with the roads program. We found out that Commonwealth Ave is being renovated, and yet fiber wasn't part of that, and that's a shame. So getting it integrated with that. But I do want to push back a little bit on your assertion as far as the undeserved. If I understand it right, most of the undeserved houses are multi-dwelling units. And I think you assert that one of the barriers to that are the homeowner associations. And I guess I would need to point out that the homeowner associations are actually residents themselves, and they were elected by the people in the community. So they're making decisions based on what the residents of that community want. So they use surveys and other instruments to find that out. So I think what they're finding out, and I know they're finding out because I live in one, is that, in fact, the residents don't want to pay the fee to hook up, especially because the competition is a whole lot less expensive and the competition is readily available. So if we're going to break into that large undeserved population, there's going to have to be some subsidy from the fiber broadband business itself. And it's not clear to me that it can pay for itself. So again, if that's where we're really going to break through to get more people on fiber, it's going to require a large investment, and I would need to see that the fiber broadband business itself could afford that investment. Because, in fact, I know that the residents themselves find it too expensive, especially when they can get Comcast for free and right away. So I need to point that out. So, thank you.
Okay. Linda, you had a question.
Yeah, sorry. Before, I apologize, I just wanted to apologize. I need to leave for a family obligation, but I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to listen to our report, and Mark has my full confidence to answer any questions. And I'd be happy, I'm available by email afterwards.
All right, thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you to you and the committee for coming in at a high level in terms of laying this out for us. But I do want to call your attention to slide number 12. Just make sure I understand the major point that you're making. As I look at the 239 number under the 195 year, which I believe you said was the more conservative of the two approaches, if I understood correctly. So is the 239 represent lost opportunity? Or is that 239 what actually got done in those two years? It wasn't clear to me.
Oh, okay. The calculation was had the subscriptions actually grown at 195 per year, which is the average of the three years prior.
Right.
Then there would have been 124 more subscriptions.
Okay.
Added in 2020 and an additional 115 more subscriptions added in 2021 for a total of 239 subscriptions today. So that sort of is the calculation. Of course, the...
So that, okay, that's helpful. So the label on that column is sort of hard for somebody who just comes in and looks at this to discern what you were after there. So that's helpful. And then the 240K has that, also includes, if you consider it with installation fee.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically, the broadband has charged $150 per subscription one time for an installation fee, so that just, so it computes the, it assumes that in the first year, the new subscriptions are there for six months, just as an average. And then for the second year, of course, then they would be there for 12 months.
And so I can tell that you and the committee are strongly recommending that the interdepartmental loan between broadband and CMLP be re-looked at. Are you specifically questioning the amount of that loan or the terms of that payback?
Personally, I am concerned that the amount may not be correct. As you know, I should say so aloud because it may not be true for... I was personally involved, obviously, with the implementation of the broadband service for, up through 2019, when I was employed with the town. And we never had, were carrying any internal cash balance that was, so that apparently came to light in an audit that was completed after that time period. We did seek some clarification from the finance director at the light plan about it, and I spoke with Carrie most recently on Friday about it, and I think the expectation is that the staff will review that just to make sure. Our real point, though, is that if it is, if that is the actual financial condition, then we need to shift our thinking a little bit about whether or not, what broadband can actually pay for, both whether it can pay for MMN, because that's obviously optional at some level, or whether it can make capital investments in fiber extensions. If it turns out that there was some oversight or that that amount is not, in fact, an amount that's owed, then obviously the financial position is different, and I think it's more coherent, more like what we've generally thought, which was that it was returning a fairly good return on investment and could afford to make more investments. And both can't be true, so we need to understand which one. So we're recommending that staff take a look at it, and then, you know, if necessary, make some adjustments to the repayment schedule because that payment schedule was put in place at the recommendations of the auditors. But I don't think it really thought about, well, what do you really want to be able to do over the next 10 years besides pay the electric company back?
Next question.
Thank you.
Carrie?
So I agree with Mary. I was the liaison, and this group is really dedicated. They met every week and really had aggressive timetable, really good job. I have some questions. Page 11, you say the total contract value of a new subscription is about $16,000, did you say per year or over?
No, over 20 years.
Over the 20 years.
That you would expect.
That makes much more sense. Okay. All right.
That calculation, obviously, is detailed in the report.
Right, right. Okay, so it's, this is the gross value or the net profit kind of?
That would just be the revenue from a particular subscriber. The average subscriber spends about $70 a month.
Right.
Just...
Yeah. And so then there would be costs, of course.
No, no, that adds up. That's good. Okay. And then I had a question based on the monthly report that Jason showing the monthly new customer installs. So I know in the winter it's really low, and April it went up to 24, and I'm wondering why it's down again in May. Are you starting, do you know, are they starting to catch up with the backlog, or is there another problem? And maybe you don't know, so...
I don't know the specifics, but I will point out, there is something interesting about that. So monthly new customer installs is people connecting to the network. But if you actually look at the second page of that report, at the bottom, and look at the subscriber counts from January to May...
Right, there are a lot of disconnects.
You see that it went from 1564 to 1585, which is just a net increase of 21 over six months, five months is displayed there. So we have this concern that we don't, if you don't know who's leaving, only looking at who's walking in the door doesn't give you an accurate picture of the business. And so that's an important thing. And I know Jason's working on how to present that differently because I have spoken...
All right, that makes sense. And then I think my most important question is, what you and your committee advise the select board, how we should go from here? I mean, obviously, we have to look into some metrics, we have to look into that debt repayment plan, et cetera. But globally, do you think there should be a follow-on committee? For example, your most important question is who's going to pay and how are they going to pay? And you didn't have, you know, time or resources to do that. What is your thinking about the future here?
I think that the most important thing in the early going is to establish the business metrics and the governance. I think that the light board is headed in the right direction, and we have a lot of confidence that the approach that Jason is taking, and I know that's well supported by what Carrie is doing as town manager, is starting down the right track. So I think that the first things first, confirm where we really are today.
Okay.
And that may take a little while to evolve. We're also, as we know, emerging from the pandemic. So it's important to really take a look at that growth. There's a year-long backlog of customers. The interested customers per month seems to be very steady. The question is, can we get to the point where that business is starting to grow again the way we thought it was growing and that its cash position starts to be effective? I think I alluded to it in the transmittal... I think I alluded to it in the transmittal report. The fund balance of broadband is equal to about four months of expenses. That's very, very close to the bone to be operating a business like this. So it needs to be given some time to, to make sure that it's, that it's operating. And once we have that clear picture, then it makes sense to set, to do that. What Mary mentioned about the investments in, in getting into those multi-dwelling units, the reason that they have things like cable providers is because those cable providers do not ask residents to bear that full cost of getting to them in the first place. And, and a business like this needs to operate like, like that. And so that focus needs to be brought, become clear. But it will only become clear once the finances are really, really crystal clear.
Henry, did you have questions?
Well, yes, just looking at it from a very, very long perspective, virtually, I think every home in Concord has telephone and/or cable service to their home. And so getting to those homes should not be a problem physically. It's stringing wire. And so what kind of competitive disadvantages do you have? Are you, for instance, in a position where everything you do must be underground and the, and Comcast is able to use the poles that exist because they have rights to them and so they don't have to underground to get to these customers? And is the problem, is that a restriction that is really hampering you? Is the fact that people have to pay in order to get connected more than a nominal fee? I know, for instance, in my case, I waited like three or four years and it cost me thousands of dollars to get from a vault in the street to my house. And is it the fact that the real money in this game is selling the content, not the internet access? And so whereas you're charging people 75 bucks a month for internet service, and then all the money for content is not going to you. People are paying Hulu and Amazon and Netflix and all that. Whereas Comcast is charging people like, you know, 200 or 300 bucks a month because they're selling content and presumably, that makes it profitable for them. I mean, is it a really, are you really up against a kind of a very challenging competitive environment in order to, in order to make this work? And one more question.
Sure.
It's a big question.
The question is this. My understanding is that the, the fiber optic was originally something that was, was created for the use of communication between municipal agencies. And has, is, is, is that, is which, which, which is a dog and which is a tail and what's, which one is wagging what? And does it still have real value to the town to have its own fiber optic network?
Okay, that's a truckload of questions.
That's a truckload of questions, which, which explains the length of our report. So first off, thank you for that question, especially the last part of it. The, the fiber optic network has extremely high value for the town. We, we spend some time in the executive summary session, which is not that long, but it details how it's, the fiber network supports the communications throughout the school system, the communications through the town, between the town buildings, the communications for the water department, the communications for the public safety radio network. So it provides substantial benefits, which would all turn up as operating costs for the town and the municipal entities if it were not actually there. So it provides a substantial benefit from that perspective. And we, we recognize that and it continues to do so.
And does the town essentially give you a book entry for the value of those services so that you get a more realistic view of what the cost is to run the civilian service?
The, it's fair to say that the, the town pays nominal to, you know, almost no expenses for the, for example, the communications to the radio towers for the police station are provided because that needs to be done for the town and it's, it's viewed as cost avoidance and goes right back into the police department budget. So there is not a lot of internal accounting that, that is designed to, to collect that. Likewise, the Light Plant, to the extent that the fiber network is used to read electric meters, which was its very first mission when it was sold as a smart grid by, by the electric department, that also is CMLP operations. And so it, it occurs without that. You asked an important question of what's the competitive disadvantage? And it does come down to the fact that putting a new connection to residences is an expensive proposition. Many of us were probably not even around or when, in the 1960s, when Manhattan Cable and Cable Vision and some of these companies started trying to wire the cities with coaxial cable, many, many bankruptcies occurred. And, but that fire, that cable eventually got put in place. And when the cable provider comes along to a new customer, they can almost 100% of the time expect that there's already a cable there for them to put their wire, their signal through. And so they have very, very little cost. So building a new network takes time and takes money. But we can also look back and say the earliest of those networks, like the telephone network, if you don't count water as a network, is 100 years old now and still in use in some places. So the, it's a very long-term investment that's being made and fiber has a long-term payback, which is why, why the crux of our recommendation of take a look at when you're buying fiber, don't pay it back over four years or five years or even 10 years because it's a 20, 30 and longer year investment to be made. I'm happy to cover your more questions.
I know that you could talk for an hour on the answers to those questions.
Yeah, but there is quite a bit in the, in the report about the.
About some of your other points about the undergrounding and those kinds of issues. So I just wanted to conclude, I think with just my own remarks, that first of all, it does seem like you've outlined a few service area extension opportunities. You know, it doesn't seem like we've saturated the take rate yet. It looks like there is a healthy backlog. I am a little concerned about the churn. And it's funny because we have had fairly stable service over the past several months. We did have a significant outage some time ago, but now it's been very solid service. And so I am concerned about that churn. It does seem like there are, of course, big opportunities for just doing more marketing of the service. That hasn't really been happening. And that to make sort of sound investments in reaching the multi-unit dwellings that makes sense, those all make sense. And reducing the standards for burying cable, you know, fiber is so much easier to bury than almost anything. So we shouldn't have this heavy duty scheme. But what I do question is the, that policy issue, the equity policy issue, just because when I think of an analogy for this service, I think of the sewer system as like the closest one. Because it's, you know, it's a cer, it, it serves a certain area, there are dramatically higher costs for reaching others. And there are alternatives, such as septic, in the case of sewer, for, you know, households to get service. And in this case, you know, there are other competitors out there. And even when it comes to those that don't have many resources, there are programs in place that are probably superior to what we could offer as a town. You know, $10 a month, including content, you know, that would probably not, you know, make our alternative very attractive. So I just think I would challenge that goal. And I know that that's your bullet number one. So I guess that is the biggest quandary here for me. A number of the other issues that you've raised, I am actually, have come around to being very sympathetic to the PLOF point in particular. On the ARPA offsets, I, I feel like it's really more a question of, we've had a lot of different reductions in revenues around the town. And I don't know if anyone's getting full recovery of their lost revenues. So, but maybe something does make sense there. And, and then the loan repayment schedule, we, we just need to sort out what the, what the financial situation is. I also wanted to say that I was really impressed in the town manager's report where Jason's update already includes some of the metrics that were recommended in this report. So this report's already having an impact and the department's already being responsive. So I, I'm really very pleased to see that. Okay. Any other points before, we are over time, as I expected. Luckily, we have time built in at the end of our schedule tonight. So if there's, oh, and yeah, I do want to make an opportunity for the public to comment on this because this is a major undertaking. So let's, let's give just a few minutes for public feedback. So if we see someone in the room, we'll start with that. And then meanwhile, if there's anyone on the Zoom that has a public comment, please raise your hand using the raise, the feature. Yes?
Nick Pappas, 1743 Monument Street.
Okay, Mr. Pappas.
I will say one thing, for all of the advantages that Comcast has, their service is often very expensive compared to what you can do by cutting the cord. And our house did that years ago. And I'd be happy to work with you to show you exactly why it comes out being a lot more expensive for certain situations with Comcast.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the Zoom? Let's see. Here we go. Who, who is that? Unfortunately, I can't read the.
Louise.
Okay. Louise, could you identify yourself or you can unmute?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Louise Berliner, 179 Independence Road. I've been a broadband subscriber and I think it's really great for the town. And there's a lot of reasons, but it's almost like a patriotic Concordian vote of confidence to support the town in this way. And I think it's an incredible possibility for revenue as well for the town by extending it beyond our boundaries at some point. So I'm thinking that it's a really good thing and we've been very happy with it. And I live with a very tech savvy geek who was much more in favor of the high-speed broadband and said, we have to get that, forget Verizon. So I wanted to put a vote for that and just, and just really impressed by what the committee has done and feel that the town invested so much and has gone so far. Really, I think we need to complete this project. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? If so, use the raise hand feature and unmute and identify yourself. Okay.
Jason?
Jason Bolger, do you have any remarks you'd like to make at this time?
I just want to thank the task force for their work. I attended many of the meetings and talked to Mark and others offline. And as you mentioned, Matt, we have been listening and we're happy to take the torch and continue to move those recommendations forward and capture those metrics, report them to the Light Board, the Select Board and others at regular intervals. So I'm just very appreciative of the hard work and, and ready to move forward and also be creative with other solutions. The, as Gordon had mentioned at a previous forum, the task force was restricted to only studying a specific type of expansion, which is fiber. But he suggested and others have suggested that there are more creative opportunities that we could look into for some of those multi-dwelling units.
Like hybrid approaches, yes. Okay. Excellent. So at this point, I'd like to close this topic. Thank the task force for its work and for its report. And I think you're already having an impact, as I had mentioned, and we expect more.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank Gordon Brockway, David Hassel, Gail Hyer and Scott Hopkinson, who, who served with me and as well as Jason, Jill Moon-Heron, the staffs of CMLP and the Town Manager's Office for their support of the task force. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we look forward to future contributions of you all as volunteers to the town, given the excellent work that you've done.
Now that we're off this one.
All right. So now we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the trolley.
Do we have to do?
We don't have to do those yet. We can do all of these as late as we want to.
Okay, you're gonna move them all out of, all right, fine. Fine with me.
Push them down the agenda.
Fine with me, okay.
Yep. And we're well past the time that we suggested that we were going to handle the trolley.
Which means we're extra ready.
Okay. So who do we have representing ourselves tonight? I think I recognize you all, but maybe the public would not.
My name is Erin Stevens. I'm the town's Public Information and Communications Manager, and I am also the staff person for the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
And Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. And we have, I believe Elizabeth Hughes is on Zoom, a town planner, and Beth Williams, our Economic Vitality and Tourism Manager, is also on Zoom.
Okay. And so we had a pretty robust discussion of this topic last time you were here. And I think we had a few open questions and we also had, were wanting to hear from other town bodies. And so maybe you can give us an update of what's happened in, since then.
Absolutely. So I'll go ahead and skip through this a little bit. So one of the questions I know was asked was, why now? Why is this important now? And the answer to that is we need data for the FLAP grant, the Federal Land Access Program grants. So that will be fully funded, if we get the money, for the REV 250 Expanded Shuttle Project. So that would be expanded service in Concord, including a West Concord loop, including Lexington and Lincoln. So that's that regional service that we're looking to have. This will allow us to sort of work out the kinks and the bugs ahead of time. And will also be a fully funded service if we get this grant, which would be great. Especially because we've seen that we're expecting, based on historic data from both our national parks as well as similar national parks, other historical national parks, probably influx around 200,000 people, starting in 2024 and continuing in 2025. That didn't go next. One of the questions I know was asked was, what will this thing look like? So this is a mocked up version I did in Photoshop. So while it's not a trolley this year, this is our way to sort of brand it and make it something that's eye-catching and something that people are going to go, well, I do want to get on that. That looks like fun. There's, you know, there's historic photos of Concord that you may not be, the Concord trolley may not be stopping at each of these stops, but it is providing an opportunity to look at and say, well, where, what's that second one on the, on the left? Well, that's the Concord Townhouse. If you'd like to go there, here's how you get there. It's easy walking distance from this stop or this stop. So it's starting more of a conversation and it's also, we think it's kind of fun and hopefully something that can be continued in the branding.
So it will be a dedicated vehicle with signage?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So one of the things that was talked about a lot was the trolley stops and the, the lack of one in West Concord. So we went and we talked with different businesses. We talked with the Concord Business Partnership. And we came to a compromise, because of the work that is being done in West Concord on Commonwealth AV, it'd be very difficult to add an extra loop. It would, from the get-go, be constrained in what it was able to do. And it would cost the same amount as doing this other trolley loop.
An additional $100,000.
Yes, an additional, so $200,000 for just this pilot project. So what the compromise we came up with was, is to add an additional stop that is stopping at the West Concord Train Depot twice a day at 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. So that'll allow people to get off, they can shop, they can get lunch, they can explore West Concord, and they can either hop on the train from there if they decide that they want to continue to learn a little bit more about West Concord and explore, or they can hop right back on the trolley and come back to Concord Center to continue riding on the hop-on, hop-off trolley, or they can head back to their other destinations.
Yeah, so I did have a question about. Yeah, so I did have a question about that, which was just given that you're trying to synchronize the stop at the Concord Center MBTA station with the arrival of the train, then it seems surprising to me that, you know, the next stop would be the train station, given that the train is also going to the same place. So I just still was a little confused about that, how that is supposed to work. Why would you be on the trolley instead of the train? Or, you know, why, I don't know, why the West Concord Train Depot as the West Concord stop as opposed to someplace else? And I don't, not that I have any other place in mind, but.
So the the train station in West Concord was decided as a good stopping point because it's close to the center of the West Concord area, but someplace that will be able to be receiving passengers or tourists or visitors, even when Commonwealth Ave is under construction. That's the main issue is we want to make sure that it can make an easy loop around. It can go up near Church Street and turn around to come back towards Concord Center in an easy loop as opposed to getting stuck behind, you know, a dump truck or something like that, that would definitely throw off the schedule.
Construction of Commonwealth Ave goes from Baharal Street to Kenneth Dunn Square. So that whole area is going to just be impassable at times.
Passable.
At times.
Okay, good. I hope it's only at times.
What does a train ticket from Concord Center to West Concord cost?
That's a good question.
I think it's around two bucks.
Yeah. I think it's zero.
Zero?
I think.
Free?
No, it's technically, I think it's around two bucks. And it is a hassle because, of course, you get the whole Charlie ticket concept. But the technically, but then practically, they don't often, you know, get around to you.
So I have a question also. I'm really delighted that it's going to go to West Concord. And at first, I thought you were going to try to synchronize it with trains. But I guess it sounds more like it's a place for people to go shopping, have lunch. It doesn't need to be maybe synchronized with the trains because if you're taking the train, it are the ones at are the stops at the Concord Depot synchronized with the MBT trains?
Yes.
The Concord Center one, but not the West Concord one.
Right.
Correct. And yeah, we chose 11 and 1 because not only is it around that lunchtime sort of, you know, tourism boom, if you will, economic time, but it will also be when there's fewer cars in the road. There's rush hour hasn't quite started yet. We're seeing rush hour a little bit earlier than we did in the past, but this sort of avoids that time so that we can get through that area quicker.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So what is supporting us? Why did we, why are we looking to do this? We have, I'm not going to name, go through all of these, but we have a number of different studies, analysis, and goals that the town is trying to reach. For instance, envision Concord, we know that there's sustainable and transportation goals that are listed in here that have been pointing towards something like this. We also have tourism data that is supporting this, as well as observations that has
I just heard a little bit.
That have come from our Visitor Center and our Chamber of Commerce. So we feel that we have quite a bit of information that's backing this up. And then we'll make this, it seems like it's in a good spot right now. So some of the support that we've gotten over the past couple of months, well, overall, has been from the Concord Business Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Economic Vitality Committee, the Sustainability Division. And we've heard from many Concord businesses that they are in full support of this and very excited to see something like this happen.
Okay. So I think that does does bring us up to date. And I guess, are there other questions from the board about where we stand now relative to this effort?
So do we know how the other partners that you're working with on this, potentially on the FLAP grant, are collecting data? And also, what, do you have just a general magnitude of what the grant application is going to be?
I know it's in there. There was an estimate in the study that was done, the Volpe feasibility study that's online. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
Lincoln doesn't have the capacity to do a comparable type of grant. And Lexington has already been using their their model, which is the trolley.
The Liberty Ride.
The Liberty Ride. But that's a different model. That's where you do storytelling along the way. So it's an interpretive historic travel from Lexington into Concord. It doesn't actually stop anywhere in Concord to pick people up. So it gives us a different data set. And then this is just going to help contribute our numbers. It will also give us some experience and some understanding of what is involved with running a shuttle or a trolley service for for future planning purposes. When we, again, if the workforce transportation grant becomes available, we'll definitely be applying to that again. And this would give us a better understanding of what's involved in that.
And then I know there was some, I don't know if it was public correspondence or questions that came up around the table, but and there were some ideas, I guess, suggested in terms of what you might want to collect in terms of data and how you could go about that. Have you had a chance to give any more thought to that and sort of start generating the categories that you want to collect information in?
We've been thinking about it, but we don't have definite information to share this evening with that. I do know that we we were successful in funding for a Massport intern this summer that would be associated with both the Visitor Center and with the IT Division. One of the things that we thought an intern could do is simply ride the trolley on a day and collect information directly from people who are on the trolley. The other is that there were, we're looking at different models for geo fencing. So understanding where people were coming from, where they were getting off, what they were, what they were planning to do when they were here. That would be with another company. And Beth Williams has put together that information, has a couple of consultants that she has gathered information from. It would be a small amount of money that is already available in the Economic Vitality budget. So it would be over and above.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's also additional availability from the trolley provider that we got a bid from that has several different options available for collecting data.
So I was reminded, actually, of one of the points that I was making last time, and I don't know what, how you felt about it, of just dispensing with the fee, you know, for this round, just given that it seems like fee recovery is not going to be substantial. And it just simplifies everything. So I didn't know, is that, was that something you're going to proceed with? Or does, do you want to try out what it is to collect the money? Or what's going on with that?
Two thoughts on that. One, if we were to collect the money, there's a new program called Fair Harbor, which is being used in Salem and for the Liberty Ride Trolley.
Yeah, in Lexington.
In Lexington. And we would like to implement that because it's a free service and would make it very efficient and better for us to test it here to see if we want to use it at the Visitor Center.
See, I can see the advantage of testing out what it takes to collect the money. But I also think like, wow, it's, it does complicate everything to collect money.
It does complicate a lot. And if it were a free service, I'm sure that we would have a higher rate of usage. That's what was observed with other similar trolley services in other national parks. And that's part of the Volpe study as well.
Yeah.
It really worked with our parking meters.
Yeah. All right. So then I think this brings us, you had another question?
Yeah, I have a follow on question to Linda's question as far as collecting data. And I'm wondering if it's too much to ask that if, I know that this data is going to be helpful with tourism. Is there any way that you're going to be able to collect data around transportation for workforce or transportation for residents? Is that too much to ask from this trolley? And especially?
Well, because there's no destination for workforce, really.
Well, some of it, it could be people coming on the train, going to work at?
At 11 o'clock in the morning and returning at 1:00?
Yeah, for restaurants and also for medical appointments at the Baker Ave.
Well, okay, it's too much.
It's pretty peripheral.
Answer my question.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think if we have, you know, destination or where people are getting off and get that kind of information, that could help inform if, to the extent that information is.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I was turned around on this whole idea when I read something that Beth Williams mentioned about she, she pointed us to a report that's on your website about the value of tourism to Concord. It's $72 million a year in direct. So I'm thinking, so that was what really kind of convinced me that this is a good idea. But I would really, I really want to move forward. I hope you collect data on this, but I would really want to move forward on other types of transportation, which is one of the.
Yeah. So I think this comes down now to just the question of money. And I, this is an allocation of about $100,000. And the proposal would be it would come from the this year's ARPA funds. And I think that those, I think what we've done this year, our proposal for this year, as opposed to future years, is that the town manager, at her discretion, is saying, okay, we've got this portion of the overall ARPA funds because we can't really go through a town approval process, budget process for this fiscal, that really this is a purse that you've got that you can open for a project.
Yeah. And I think we agreed that that they would all come, each of them would come forward to the Select Board.
Of course.
For discussion, sure.
As well.
And I think the next meeting is is the meeting that we have scheduled.
For your overall scheme.
And let's hope.
But in this case, we're sort of ahead of the curve.
Yeah, well, I think we had, we had hoped the overall plan for the year might, might be ready at the same time. And unfortunately, it's not.
Okay. So you're good to go with with this allocation of funds?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then. I think that we are ready then for a vote on this proposal.
Can I just ask one more question? If we have, if we have concerned about, concerns about the importance of data gathering, and the fact that the, the experimental value will not be genuine if we don't do significant marketing for the service, because people need to know it's there, especially if we're relying on people coming to town for the purpose of getting onto this trolley, is the additional expense over and above the $100,000 going to be more than trivial?
So I would say that because we're a couple weeks past when we originally planned on starting this, we have a little bit of a cushion now in that we probably have two weeks worth of that funding that we could use towards the marketing, I would think.
So in other words, your contract is per hour, per week? It's not 100,000 period?
Well, it's for four, it was for four months, seven days a week, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the four months.
So now it'll be three and a half months or something?
Correct.
Okay.
But we do have other advertising funds available in the Economic Vitality and Tourism Budget. And that was part of the, the item that I referred to with gathering the information and the geo fencing. That's also part of an advertising campaign that would be going forward.
So that's a few, I mean, what was a few thousand dollars a week, wasn't it?
No, total.
No, no, what I mean, your fee for the bus service was like, what was it, $5,000 a week?
Oh, for the trolley service overall?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, 100,000 for four months.
If you take 20 weeks and you divide it by 100,000.
Right, about 5,000 a week.
Comes out to something like $3 a week.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right. So can I have a motion?
Yes. Move to reserve $100,000 of the approximately 5.654 million to be granted to the Town of Concord under the ARPA State and Local Recovery Funds for the purposes of the proposed Trolley Shuttle Pilot Program as detailed in the memo included in this board packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to the results.
Okay, so now we're looking at the renewal of the Concord Center Cultural District. So I think we recognize a similar person.
Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management, yes. And it is not necessarily the renewal, but it's the intention to renew. There's a full application that will have to be prepared and submitted later this summer. But I polled the current members of the Concord Center Cultural District. Four of them got back to me. One was on the fence, and the other three said, yes, we should go forward with with renewing the designation for Concord Center.
Is there any downside to it?
The only downside has been that they haven't met in the past year.
The last minutes I could find were for 2020.
Okay, the last two years. Because of COVID, because of, the membership is made up of, of our cultural district destinations. Concord Art, the Umbrella, let me see, Concord Free Public Library, we have a representative from Concord Rec.
I mean, there have been some changes. There's now a Three Stones Gallery moved from West Concord to Concord Center.
Correct. But everybody has been focused on just surviving the pandemic. And so that they have not, unlike West Concord, which has a bit more variety of people involved with with different goals, there, this group has not met. And that's part of the issue is that they haven't met. I don't think there is a downside in terms of what they bring and offer to the community. And I think that they're an important part of Concord Center's experience.
I think there's no question that the cultural district exists. I mean, in that there, you know, if anything, there's more activity than ever in that district that's arts and culture related, you know, including world class theater and just all kinds of things. So it's really just that when you have a cultural district, typically, there is a program of activities that's related to the district as an entity. And that hasn't been happening. And, you know, again, as you pointed out, I don't know how essential it is, but it does kind of call into question, well, what is the purpose of having this be a district, given that, okay, it seems to be doing fine without having, you know, any activities related to this designation?
The initial proposal was brought forward by the Chamber of Commerce as it existed back in 2011, 2012. And so the Chamber has changed. And we, but we do now have a committee. We didn't have a committee at the time. It was a sort of an ad hoc group that was made up of representatives led by the Chamber. In the first five years, we renewed, they created, we created the Concord Center Cultural District Committee. They met initially prior to COVID and had some great thoughts and ideas about what they wanted to accomplish. And then COVID hit. So but I think that there is still a need and a purpose. And the intention, and then we'll pursue that conversation. Right now, it has a limited district that we want to explore expanding the district to include Concord Museum and the Orchard House, and then out to the North Bridge. We believe that it is a walkable experience. And with the improvements that have been made along Cambridge Turnpike, that the experience for walking is improved. So that is what the application will look like later this summer.
Well, and as we move towards the 250th.
Right.
Yeah.
And with the trolley. It's so there's lots of stuff connecting.
We just need to reinvigorate the committee. Okay. So there's not really then a vote?
This is like one of the business improvement district kind of deals where, where they have the ability to appropriate funds and collect assessments against the?
Yeah, not the assessments, though, I should say that other cultural district committees do, you know, hand out grant money, for example, right? Or collect grant money for their programs. And I don't think that they've been active in Concord Center on that front.
They've gone after a couple of grants through the Mass Cultural Council, and they've awarded those grants. We have spent some of them. The most recent one, we have not. So working on that. Working on that.
So.
So, yeah, what are we doing?
I move to authorize the chair to submit a letter on behalf of the board to the Mass Cultural Council to seek the renewal of the cultural district designation for Concord Center.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we'll move to the fleet electrification update. And do we have our sustainability director, Amanda Cohn, available?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Amanda, please get it for yourself. Okay.
Amanda Cohn, Sustainability Director.
Is it possible to give her the floor, if you will, of the, the exclusive visibility
Speaker view. If MMN could put us on speaker view.
That would be great. Well, not us, but her, yeah. Okay, Amanda, take it away.
Great, thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to take a minute here to share my screen because I do have a PowerPoint, which was also in your packet, in case the screen isn't large enough in the room. And so I'm going to go ahead and share screen. So we just completed our fleet electrification roadmap and fleet infrastructure for the municipal fleet. And so this isn't thinking about commercial or residential EV charging or fleet or electrification of vehicles, it's just for municipal operations. And this is also, the reports are available online at that link at the bottom of the page here, just in case anybody's looking for additional information after the presentation. And this really was driven by the town's commitment to meet our carbon emission reduction goals. And so here you can see different scenarios based on how fast we electrify our fleet, how we'll start to see those emissions go down. This also doesn't account for CMLP's progress on their goals to be carbon-free within the near term. And so when we reach that goal as well, we'll see these numbers go down even more. So just keeping in the back of your mind that this is really the why driving the fleet electrification. And I wanted to remind folks that we do have a sustainable fleet policy that was adopted by the Select Board in 2020 that asked for this type of report to be created and to be updated on a periodic basis. But other high-level policy goals included purchasing or leasing exclusively battery electric vehicles for all light-duty vehicles. So this is really things like the, the sedans, your typical car, even some of the light-duty trucks would fall into this category, but things that are medium or heavy duty, some of the technology isn't quite there yet, so that requirement doesn't exist. But it does ask to pilot that type of technology where feasible and to try to minimize our emissions in other ways, like carpooling, minimizing idling, and thinking about just reducing the size of our fleet in general. It also called us to maintain consistent inventory across departments and to think about retiring vehicles early if we can, so that we're able to electrify them sooner. And I can talk about a few of these points and how we're meeting those and how we intend to improve them based on this study. So those are the two high policy drivers for the report. There is two deliverables, one really focused on the transition of vehicles and the other on infrastructure to support those vehicles. And so it looks into EV suitability, the total cost of ownership of vehicles, and also thinks about the infrastructure needs and the cost of those. And I'll go into a bit more detail on those. This is our current fleet by vehicle type. So we have, we have 227 vehicles in our fleet. And you can see the different types of vehicles that we have. The ones in the red boxes and then the red arrow pointing to the light-duty pickups are the ones that, when they are replaced, will have to be those battery and electric vehicles per the sustainable fleet policy.
Ah, the buses.
You can see that there's.
By the way, we're deferring public comment to the end of this presentation. Please do not interrupt the speaker.
You can see that it's a pretty good chunk of our fleet, but I'll talk a bit more about percentages in a minute. Just to give another sense of what we currently have in our fleet, we only have seven electric vehicles, so that's about 3% of the fleet at the time of this study. And then the rest of it's pretty well divided between diesel and gasoline. And when we went through the study, we were looking at when vehicles would need to be replaced, so what's their typical lifespan and when do we project that they would need to be replaced? A few things went into this, like their current mileage, if we know that they're already exhibiting some wear and tear and we've had to do some repairs on them. We've also looked at the vehicle selection. Again, is there a model on the market now that fits our operational needs? We've looked at range suitability, which is saying, how far do we typically travel in a day and are the vehicles able to provide that range? And later, also looking at the charging capability as it relates to the dwell times or the amount that a vehicle is sitting there in a parking lot able to charge, and then the total cost of ownership of those vehicles. So that includes purchase price, fuel, oil, and charging costs, and also maintenance costs, because EVs are projected to have less maintenance costs. So this really helps when you're reading the report of the breakdown of the different categories of what was exactly studied in the report and then what different categories that they fall into. So at the top of the hierarchy here, we have all of our assets, there's 227. Right away, 50 of those were excluded from the study because they were already in EV, they were replaced right prior to the study, or they're an off-road vehicle. And off-road vehicles, I should mention, are excluded from the sustainable fleet policy. And then on the other side of the hierarchy, we have 177 vehicles that were studied. We have the best fit, so those are the ones that can easily be replaced with a battery electric vehicle right away today if we wanted to or needed to. We put the buses into their own category, and this was so we could look at their carbon emission potential separately, but also the school is looking at their electrification and the charging infrastructure needed at the bus depot in more depth than we were looking for this study. Potentially electrifiable comes next. There's about 64 of those vehicles, and they fall into three different categories. So maybe it's a pickup truck that's a medium duty, and we could size it down to a light duty. There are some that can be replaced with what's on the market right now, but the cost for that is, is very expensive, and we would need to, to take a look at that and take a look at the budget and make that capital decision. And then some others could be fully electric, but there are operational concerns to their use. And then the last, going back up to the red line, there's some that do not currently have an electric option. And that really points to the need to continue to update this study and stay on top of the market and what's available, so that we can continue to provide the information to the different folks that are replacing these and get them guided in the right direction for what to replace their vehicle with. Thinking about capital planning and the replacement of the vehicles over time, you can see in this category that we are due to replace a lot of vehicles in the short term. Many of them do have full electrification options. Some of them have, are potentially electrifiable. In those cases, we may be able to push off replacement until there is an electrifiable option. We might be able to lease until there's an electrifiable option, or there might be other ways that we could pilot for some of them and then replace the others. And so there is potential even for the ones that aren't fully electrifiable to replace them with something that is still meeting our goals. And looking at the short term out into the long term, we have different graphs and total cost of ownership estimates. So if you see this TOC abbreviation, it stands for total cost of ownership, and this is for those best-fit vehicles, so the ones that we know can be replaced on the market today across the different departments that will need to replace their vehicle before 2025. The blue line is the electric vehicles, and then the yellow line are the internal combustion engines or the ICE vehicles. So you can see in some cases, the electric vehicles' total cost of ownership is a little bit more expensive, sometimes it's not. And typically, it does tend to even, even out over the whole townwide fleet. And we have these available for the other electrification scenarios as well as different timeframes. So there's a lot of data that you could dig into, but I'm not presenting it here tonight. So just some key findings from the study of those studies, the 177, 34% of them could be replaced with an EV currently on the market. If we look at replacing those best-fit vehicles, we are projected to save some funding, both in the near term and the long term. We found that vehicle range isn't a barrier, that 100% of the vehicle's historical driving behavior could be managed with the recommended EV option, and that municipal fleet carbon emissions could be reduced by an estimated 39% by 2030. And again, that would be even higher as CMLP decarbonizes the electricity. We, through this process, did identify some additional challenges and some needs. So we do have, all of the departments are tracking a lot of the data on their own, but we found that this was inconsistent across how different departments are tracking it, and we thought it would be really a lot easier for capital planning if we had streamlined coordination on how to track that data, but also ensures that we are able to make more data-driven decisions later on, and we can better understand the return on investment and total cost of ownership by collecting better data in a centralized location. This could also benefit through route optimization, tracking maintenance tickets, and additional other co-benefits. And I mentioned this once already, but we'll need to continue to review this and add additional analysis as more availability of medium and heavy-duty EVs come onto the market. And then as we replace our vehicles with EVs, especially for emergency operations, we'll need to ensure that we have backup generators and enough capacity to support operations when they are fully electric. So on to the infrastructure part of this study. We were really looking to solve two main questions. So do we have enough energy on site is one, one question to support enough ports to basically charge the entire fleet? And this can look at their dwell times, because some cars will be able to share different chargers or just share the same charger. Across all the different sites that have vehicles, you can see here how many different ports they'll need for their different fleets. I would really view this as a minimum, because it is only looking at the electric vehicles that we, the best electric fit and the potentially electrifiable. And so it's not accounting for all the vehicles that would eventually become, would come on the market and then need to be charged. This goes from infrastructure needs of 2025, and the light orange, dark orange is 2030, and then up to 2035 in gray, and we've got costs along the side. Unlike the vehicles where we have an opportunity to recoup some of those costs and to have cost savings, the infrastructure really is just an investment into our facilities, and we won't see necessarily a payback from installing these. And so this is really straight capital investment into our infrastructure.
Amanda, does the savings that you mentioned earlier include the infrastructure costs that are listed here?
No, they do not.
Okay, so I just net, then there is a net expense overall, I guess, when you consider both together?
Correct.
It's offset in part is the idea, though.
Yeah, it is. We do have savings for the vehicles for the current projections, but again, we aren't able to recoup anything from the infrastructure needs here.
Okay.
And then for each of those facilities, it even goes into more detail to say what type of works should those be? So should they be a Level 1? Will we need Level 2s? And it goes into a bit more detail. And the report also talks about some of the operational needs of public works, CMLP, fire and police, and their need probably for some additional larger level fast chargers. And so again, we have this for different timeframes, 2025, 2030, and 2035, so that we're able to kind of think about our capital planning needs as it relates to this. A few other tidbits on operational updates, again, thinking about emergency backup, linking our data for the charging into our fleet management software so that we again have more data, aiming to set the chargers to run off peak or at night, doing some internal education for EV drivers and sort of doing some myth busting on, on some of the new updates that the technology has made possible. And then again, just really coordinating where we can to save on the cost of charging that we may not always need one charger per one vehicle. That port ratios can get higher, but it will just have some operational concerns or operational needs to address. Part of installing the EV infrastructure will also require that we have enough capacity on site. This will also need to be updated to reflect any changes that we make to the building for electrifying the heating and cooling systems in the buildings and making sure that we have enough capacity. So it will require a coordination with the light plant. You can see here that there's already, the Concord emergency stations are already projected that will need more capacity at those two different sites. And here, again, you can just see the different cost per facility for these types of upgrades. And then I just wanted to end to say that we need to start thinking about the chargers early so that they're in place prior to the vehicles arriving. We do currently have EV support specialists that are on call to help any of the departments make decisions on what vehicles to buy and also provide advice on what types of infrastructure to put in. They're currently funded through the light plant, but may need to be fed by the town in the future, depending upon how much we utilize their services. I would really view the fleet study as a minimum of capital projection of cost over time, just given that the light and medium-duty vehicles were not a part of the projection because we don't have any information on what those vehicles will cost. We do, I would recommend that we have a centralized EV charging fund that could be co-managed with facilities and sustainability. Facilities has been really great in helping with installations at buildings to date because this also reduces costs to the greatest extent feasible, that we're not getting contractors in to install these. And they, for example, have agreed to help with installing three to four chargers at public works in the next few months over the summer. And we'll need to also continue to develop a procedure to ensure that the energy infrastructure is sufficient and account for all the costs that go along with updating, not only that infrastructure, but the electrical panels in the building. So that was a lot of information in a short amount of time, so happy to go back to any of those slides or dig into.
Yeah, so Amanda, I guess this all assumes that it's self-funding. Is there any opportunity for grants for either vehicles or infrastructures, infrastructure expenses? Have we investigated that or?
Yeah, we are seeing some. We are seeing some dollars come from the federal infrastructure bills, so the IIJA has some funding as well as ARPA. And so I think we do need to stay on top of the federal grants. We have used Green Communities for electric vehicles in the past. We're one of the communities fortunate enough to have received that grant multiple times. And so the amount that we can get from them is limited compared to other communities. So there is some funding out there. We also have some capital funds that have been set aside in the short term from previous town meetings to support with the immediate push on the battery electric vehicles.
So do, is my understanding then that we will see this plan kind of embodied in the capital plan? So is my understanding then that we will see this plan kind of embodied in the capital plan that we're pursuing over the coming couple of years? Well, several years, I guess, if you push through the whole thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then the other question for you, Amanda, is that you had mentioned that you had carved out the school buses because the schools are specifically looking at both charging infrastructure and programs for those. So is that, that's the reasoning behind this? We got an email today talking about an EPA grant to offset the cost of school buses with an August deadline. And I'm just curious, you know, are we pursuing that or is that the schools that are pursuing that? How does that all work?
Yeah, so we do have a working group that's looking at the EPA grants. And we also are looking at, it's the, the.
The Volkswagen one?
Massachusetts Energy Coalition.
Okay.
And so we have two different grant opportunities that we're looking at for the replacement of the buses. And then I think they're still working on a contract and a scope of work to look at the charging infrastructure at the depot.
Okay. All right then, questions from the board?
So thank you, Amanda. There's so many moving parts to this. And I assume that there's no, you mentioned that there will be a need for centralized tracking system to manage all this. I assume that doesn't exist at this point. But more importantly, with the thirty-four percent that are eligible or where EV vehicles currently exist that could replace. So is it a matter of the current state of the art that a department request or an individual within a department brings forward a request, has to worry about their own infrastructure needs? How is it currently working? And also, do we have some kind of, related to that same illustration? Do we have some kind of ceiling on the premium that we might pay if a decision is made to go ahead and purchase an EV vehicle for fleet replacement? Do we have some kind of ceiling on the premium that would be paid for that EV?
No, I think the last question is a little bit easier to answer. We don't have a premium ceiling on the amount additional that you would pay for an EV. They are very comparable to the new vehicles. And I think you can see that in the total cost estimates, that a lot of, even in some cases, the EVs are cheaper than the electric options. And so I think the procurement would operate in the same way for the vehicles. At least that the different departments and owners of those vehicles have been purchasing them by department. And would likely continue to do so. So they would look at the cost, they would look at the features that they need. For example, some of the natural resource vehicles and Public Works, they needed four-wheel drive. And so we didn't set them up with a two-wheel drive like we did for a lot of the other departments because that's a cheaper option. And so they do have the flexibility for that, for the charging. Right now, the different departments have been, to my understanding, notifying sustainability, notifying facilities and notifying CMLP. I think a lot of times it does make it to the sustainability director. I can speak to my one experience of doing this with the town while I've been here is that Public Works notified me they were getting some forward lightnings or projecting that they would in the near term and that they needed some additional chargers for that. And so we met to discuss which type of chargers they would need, met with facilities who will install them. Also did meeting with Public Works or for the light plant to ensure that we had the electrical capacity and made a plan for that facility.
So, yeah, thank you. So if I can just follow up with a quick follow-up question, and that is, if a department says we're ready to buy four vehicles, who's the gatekeeper to, that in fact, an EV does exist and does meet their needs? Because they may not come forward with that option.
So right now, the sustainable fleet policy lays out a framework of you need to consider a battery electric vehicle first. And then after that, you need to consider a plug-in option. And then after that, a hybrid. And then you can look at the ICE vehicles. And if you have.
There are classes of vehicles where we presume there is an electric option. So it's kind of default.
And if I could just follow up and add that a couple of weeks ago, we had an extensive meeting with department and division managers that are involved in purchasing vehicles. And we went through the policy and this report to make sure that everybody understood the requirements and what was available.
Great, thank you.
And is the school department included in that meeting?
So we did not, we did invite them. We didn't have any participation, but they have been participating in other meetings and of course, with the working group.
So are school buses part of this policy or are they excluded?
Well, the district owns the buses, right?
Yes, so Amanda, could you comment a little bit more about the working group?
The high school buses, I assume.
Did we lose Amanda?
Yeah, so I can say that we sent over the policy and I talked through, because they have more vehicles than just buses. And so they do have some that would be a good fit for batteries now. And for the buses, so the school committee does have a separate fleet policy than the town's policy. And I think right now we're really targeting those grants as a way to be able to fund those purchases. And I will say, if you look at the policy beyond the buses, there are exemptions for operational concerns. And so if there was someone who felt like an electric vehicle would not meet their standards or if there were other reasons to not purchase it, they could send a request to carry or the town manager to approve that and the sustainability director gives a recommendation.
Okay. So. Yes, Mary.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. This is a great presentation. I have a quick question. So both the Concord and the West Concord Station have the highest cost for building upgrades for the EV charging network. And I'm wondering, do we charge our municipal vehicles at, I'm assuming these are the train stations, right?
They are actually the police and fire station.
Ah, never mind.
Okay. Okay, I think that that's the update to us. And at this point, I think that we will move on to the 5G policy discussion. So Jason Bulger, I believe, is here.
I am.
All right, Jason. We got a lot of policy-based topics tonight, I tell you.
Policy night.
Yeah, so I think that one of the things I'd like to say, just to contextualize the discussion, is that this is an update. We're not going to be voting a policy tonight. I believe we just received an updated draft like, you know, minutes before our meeting. And so really, I think what this discussion is about is telling us the process you've been through since you've shared the draft with us, the kind of feedback that you've gotten and the kinds of changes that you have proposed in your revised draft. And then we will take a look through that and then we will come back and deliberate and vote on the updated policy. Does that sound okay to everyone in the group here? Okay.
Well, actually, I have a question. I thought that the version that we got today was basically the same.
Is that the case, Jason?
It is, it's the same policy.
Okay, so in that case, there's an amendment to that, which is we will wait to receive your revised because I assume there will be some revisions to your policy as a result of this feedback. And then we will schedule the deliberation and vote.
Exactly. So part of what I wanted to update the board on is that some of the comments require some decision-making. And we thought that it was best to bring those to the board in summary form just to give the board an opportunity to weigh in on them, to determine if they thought that they were worth modifying the policy in these substantial ways. So let me just provide a brief overview. In March, I attended a board meeting and we kind of ran out of time. But the board's direction was to come up with a draft policy for this small cell wireless infrastructure based on some of the other municipalities that had already passed something similar so that the town was protected and could specify some of the requirements surrounding these installations. So in April, I brought a policy that was derived from several other municipalities in the state. And we discussed that and the board suggested that we get feedback from both internal staff as well as the public. And so I'm here to just give some updates on that process and then talk about the next steps. But I do think that we're getting pretty close. I'll mention that it was circulated among all senior managers and they were asked to circulate it among their divisions and departments. And we did not receive any substantial changes requested from them. They were generally very supportive of the town having a policy like this. And they didn't see any problems with the implementation or processing of these applications as it was drafted. So that's good news. I'll mention that in the packet, there's a few things. There's one, which is the actual, all of the comments that were received. Another is a quick summary for those who are just, would like to understand, you know, high level, what these were looking for. And then the actual policy, the draft policy that was reviewed in April in detail that has not yet been changed. And I'll go over some of the proposed changes next. So I'm going to share my screen real quick so you guys can see.
Yeah, I also wanted to just comment that I thought that the public feedback was quite extensive and impressive. Some folks took a lot of time clearly reviewing these policies.
Agreed, yes. So we did receive eight separate submissions, one of which was just a correction and clarification of a previous submission. So there were really seven main submissions. And one of these was a compilation from four different individuals who kind of put their heads together to come up with a single submission. And then three were basically just expressing, you know, their support of this for moving it forward. So there were any recommendations that came as a result of that. So I'm going to highlight the remaining four submissions and talk about them. And just as a matter of process, you know, what I'll assume is that if we've given no guidance, we'll leave the policy as is. If there's something that the board wishes to, you know, bring up for discussion or change, then just mention it. But we don't need to have everybody comment on every single recommendation. It's only if you think that there are changes to.
You'll be here till midnight.
Exactly. So first, John Woodward made two suggestions, one that we eliminate the requirement for ten paper copies and the other that we consider not limiting it to one small cell per pole. I'm going to hold off on the discussion about copies because that's brought up two other times and I want to talk about it on the final time. But the other one, it's a fair question. Currently, the policy does require or limit only one small cell installation per utility pole. And the reasoning behind that originally when they drafted it was because of the design guidelines and aesthetics suggest that an installation should be center pole-mounted and at the top of a pole, which will make it look like it's just a continuation of the pole and not really draw your eye to it. If there are multiple cells installed on a single utility pole, then it's more likely to look like a cluster of antennas and be hanging off to one side or another. And it's going to more easily catch your eye. So that is why the policy is what it is today and how it was adapted for other communities in that way. And so the three options really are keep it as it is, say, one per pole, remove the restriction, but keep the guidelines in place, which will limit it to a center pole-mounted infrastructure at the top of a pole. Or consider, you know, an allowance for multiple installations on a single pole and remove the requirement that there's a shroud or canister over those antennas. And so really, we're just looking to ask the board, you know, do we want to keep it as a single per pole as many other communities have? Or should we entertain the idea of removing that restriction as long as they can adhere to the guidelines?
I mean, I guess the downside would be you could end up with more poles, right?
Right, I don't know how that they can install their own poles without, you know, going through the light plant and through a different review process, but.
Well, of course, they'd have to do that. Yeah, okay. But then it would also sort of give a winner takes all for the first installation on a pole.
Right.
Right. And it just seems to me that as long as the aesthetics are met, in other words, like we have the maximum dimensions and the idea of the centered aesthetic, that how it's internally configured and how many units are inside of there to meet that footprint is less of interest to me, at least. I don't know what others feel.
I agree.
Great. Then I think that we can easily change that to suggest that as long as the design aesthetics are fulfilled and that, you know, nothing is visually hanging off of a pole and it's center-mounted, then we can not specify the limit for those.
Yeah, I just want to limit the overall, the visual impact of these things.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Next, Gail Hayer had several comments and requests for change. I should point out that a lot of her comments and requests for change of the policy, I feel like fall outside this discussion because they're already have been adjudicated either by legal rulings or declaratory statements from the FCC. So I kind of remove those and distill this down to things that we actually could potentially ask of these applicants as opposed to those things which have already been shown to, you know, be legally disadvantaged, disadvantageous to communities who implement those things. So again, her full comments are in the packet. So if there is something that, you know, I missed, you're free to chime in on that. But the three biggest ones that I saw that we could discuss were measuring the emissions from any small cells. So we do ask applicants for the emission standards for the, under the technical specifications of these installations. But what we don't do is, you know, go out and do random checks or require that they do random checks to make sure that their devices fall within these guidelines. It would be unusual for these devices to not do that because they're built to very close technical specifications. But, you know, the theory is, or the motivation here is to make sure that the emissions guidelines are not being exceeded based on what the applicant is reporting to us. So that's the first one. The second one is that we, you know, make a requirement or a recommendation that the equipment that's installed be sustainable. Again, I don't know if we can require that, but we can certainly mention the interest of the town to use sustainable materials where possible. And then the final one was prohibiting the trimming of trees or vegetation. I think that being mounted on poles, the tree trimming that takes place for normal, you know, operations around utility poles would apply to these as well in terms of protecting the electrical and telecommunications infrastructure on the poles. But I think that this might extend beyond that and, you know, trimming vegetation in order to get better coverage or, you know, communicate with people's devices. So I think that, you know, there's a discussion to be had there. So are there any will to, you know, pursue any of these further or would you like me to move on?
I guess I would take the third one first, which is I would say while I think trimming in order to accommodate the physical device, you know, the installation of the device itself is fine, that trimming in order to improve transmissibility or something like that, that would seem excessive to me. So I don't know to what extent we can, you know, describe that in the policy. But if it is appropriate to include in the policy, I think that we should.
Yeah, and I do know that the trees in the public right of way would fall under the jurisdiction of the, you know, Public Utilities Commission and the Tree Warden. So.
Yeah, in any case, yeah.
There wouldn't be free rein to just cut down trees.
Right, okay. And then the one about the sustainable equipment, I think that as you had mentioned, just to assert the town's policies around that.
Yep.
I don't know, you know, as you mentioned, making, you know, it would just be a desire, not a requirement. And then the, that, as far as the emissions, I don't know what would be feasible to do. I don't know that, yeah, it's not a big deal for me personally. If the, basically, it seems to me that if the manufacturer and the installer are warranting a certain level of admissions, if they're in violation of that, then they have a problem, right?
How would we know?
Well, and that's the thing is that somebody could detect it. But do we need to have a whole program around it?
Do they have a program where they measure it, the installer or the manufacturer?
Don't know.
They do measure it from time to time, but only in terms of network maintenance and in terms of planning for upgrades. So they would go out to determine if the network coverage in a particular area. So they would go out to determine if the network coverage in a particular area was adequate. So they would be taking readings. And I'm sure that if there was something anomalous, they would report it, but they're not mandated, um, or do, and neither do they, you know, willingly just go around and measure for the sake of measuring, um.
Yeah. And usually they're doing it in order to justify adding more installations.
Right. And they're doing it for reception, not, not for health reasons.
For reception. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, okay.
You know, the, the way I feel, uh, Jason on this is I would really, one of the just broader principles of her on this policy is I want to sort of stay within the painted lines.
Right.
To the extent possible, you know, is that if there's safety in numbers. If there's other municipalities that have policies in place and they've been around for a little while and they've, you know, stood the test of time to some degree. Um, then I think that's a good sign for us in adopting our policy, you know, given our policy objectives. And that if we, we don't want to create a, a, a target essentially out of this policy.
Understood. Um, yeah. So I think that, you know, just similar to the sustainability, we can certainly, you know, suggest that there will be some sort of monitoring of emissions and that installers.
Yeah, we may monitor and if you're in defined, well, the, you know.
Right. Well, and they do have to renew their applications each year. And so it may be the type of thing where we would contact them if their equipment was out of.
Yeah.
Out of bounds.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next was, uh, Sue Felshen's suggestions and proofreading error corrections. Um, she did also bring up the 10 hard copies. Um, but other than that, I did just want to thank uh, Ms. Felshen for her comments. As the chair mentioned, she provided many, many dozens of corrections and, um, inconsistencies that she had found. And I mean, these were policies that have been approved by, you know, almost a dozen other municipalities in the state.
Let's just say there's a precedent here. Yes.
But, um, nevertheless, I thank her. Um. So, uh, finally there was a group of four individuals, Courtney Whelan, Katie Winchell, Luis Berliner, who was on the, on the, uh, meeting earlier. Michelle Laura, who offered several suggestions. First, just two overall reminders and recommendations, and that was that towns need to collect all necessary information, uh, from the applicants because the shot clock starts when, when they submit the application. And we can't waste time on requesting additional information. So we really need to make sure the application contains all that, the necessary, um, information so that we can process it. And that's part of the importance of that internal review that we did was to make sure that those staff who are going to be processing these applications, uh, ensure that that application has everything that they need. Uh, and then the second thing was that um, towns need to establish their most effective small cell policy at first. Because further revisions of the policy cannot be made if they are more restrictive than the original policy. So it's, uh, it behooves us to be as restrictive as we think we want to be so that uh, later down the road, we don't realize we should have done something else. Uh, they actually were on the other side of the hard copy, um, debate. They had heard the suggestion and perhaps we don't need these. They said that they should be required because the document does lay out in several areas where there need to be wet signatures or architectural uh, stamps to certify things. Um, I do think there could be a compromise in this and perhaps we lower the requirement from 10 to, uh, two or three. We do like to have one or two copies at least around because, you know, boards like yourselves visit our town department sometimes to review these applications or take a look at them. And it's nice to have when you're dealing with blueprints or plans, something before you. Um, so, you know, it might be willing, or it might be good for the board to consider lowering that so we don't waste paper and put an undue burden on the applicants, but also, you know, at least keep the requirement for some hard copies so that we.
Yeah, I think whatever is operationally pragmatic.
Right. And, and two to three was what I heard from some people that I had asked about that. So okay with that, we can settle on one of those numbers based on the.
Let's go for three.
Okay. Um, and um, next there's, they brought up the idea of strand mounted facilities. And this is something that our policy didn't really address, and it was something that didn't really exist as a technology when those original policies were drafted. And I, I do think that it's worth consideration. So most of these facilities are installed on a utility pole, but um, Comcast and some of the other cable providers, uh, have seen a loophole that they can actually just mount their equipment right on their own wires that they've already hung and not have to have any significant review by municipality. So, um, I would, you know, bring this comment forward to the board to consider adding, um, strand mounted to the list that we, you know, reference it that needs an application. It would be an easy change to just add that verbiage.
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, also in terms of the least preferable locations, we do have some areas, um, that are in there and they recommended adding schools and daycares because that uh, group of, of, um, like constituency is also listed in some other bylaws that we have. And so they were suggesting for consistency that, that those groups be added to that least preferable locations. Um, and then.
I don't know that we, we were talking about historic districts, but I think this is in the public way that, you know.
Right.
It's different.
And again, it doesn't prevent them from being there. It's just establishing that the town has areas that are more preferable and other areas that are least preferable. And so they were just.
Could we set the historic district as a less preferable area? Cause it definitely would be.
We could, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and, and then in terms of the schools and daycares.
Oh, actually it's already in there. Residential district, historic district. Yeah. Or schools or daycare centers. It's already there.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, oh, sorry, they did mention, um, that there is a sticker that has an RF warning that is intended to be installed near the, uh, facility on the pole. And that is for the safety of the workers who may be going up there, um, to be aware of the emissions up there. Uh, but they suggested that it be, you know, mounted somewhere where it's readable at ground level. Obviously the, the concern is that if it's, uh, tampered with or removed at a, at a place where people can reach it, uh, but it could be installed in both places. It's just, I don't know how we could ensure that it's maintained, uh, if there were, you know, vandalism or uh, just over time it erodes away. But, um, that was a suggestion that they had. And then there was also a suggestion at this, um, at this meeting that the preamble be removed, the, the list of long whereas is. And, uh, this group Courtney, uh, Whelan at Al recommended keeping the preamble and perhaps just updating it so that it had more modern language. But then it was important to set a policy statement as to why this was being implemented. Um, so those, those were their comments.
Okay. Hey, Jason, uh, about the historic districts, it's, it is referenced relative to industrial districts, but not relative to public rights away.
Okay. I can make that consistent.
Okay. And, uh, so back to your, your question about.
I guess we have stickers and the preamble are the only two.
Yeah, the preamble. So, I mean, basically, you know, if we're writing this as our bylaw, if you look at our bylaws, they don't have these whereas's.
Right.
Um, so that's, that was stylistically what I was objecting to when I made my initial remarks. So if there is some essential content contained within those whereas's, then we should just embed it into the introduction to the policy. That's all.
Yep. Absolutely. I can do that.
Yeah, as a narrative.
Yeah, as narrative. Exactly.
Yep. Um, and then any comment on the stickers or are we ready to move on?
Stickers. Sorry. I missed the stickers.
RF warning stickers are currently installed, uh, near the facility at the top of the pole where they're not really readable at the, you know, pedestrian level. So there was.
But there's also a lot of aesthetic issues of having the stickers.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they can be reached, they can be vandalized or removed.
I, I don't have feelings about this. Other, yeah.
Um, and, and then, uh, really there's just, uh, the next step. So, um, you know, I was going to go through the, the policy and make the recommended changes from the guidance I received from you tonight. As well as some of those proofreading, uh, you know, errors and inconsistencies, just to, to make sure that things were clear. Um, I will also circulate it to the internal staff one last time. Um, and then, you know, we can bring that draft back to the board. There was, um, somebody who asked, they didn't issue a comment, but they did ask a question and that was, is the board planning on having a formal public hearing for this policy? Um, and I didn't know if that was the board's wish or if you just wanted to have that.
No, I think that we've had a good, uh, two good meetings of airings of this and, um, that we will have one final opportunity. And so I think if we just advertise that, that that will be inadequate for this. I mean, you know, if you have to, if you think about it relative to other kinds of bylaw initiatives, we just have less latitude with this policy, right? We're trying to implement a policy within the limits of what, you know, we, our authority is. And so, uh, it's not like we can just devise any, any policy.
Like our cell phone bylaw.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we're doing what we can and, uh, we, we are getting great feedback and that's also a good sign that, you know, we've already gotten good public input. So it's not like this is coming out of nowhere. Um, okay. Uh, excellent. Um, any other remarks on this before we now, uh, move to, uh, miscellaneous correspondence and public comment?
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah. Thanks, Jason.
Great job, Jason. Thanks so much.
Uh, input.
Happy to help.
So actually the, the correspondence that's included in our packet is all related to the 5G uh, policy as far as I can recall. So, and that's been reviewed in this, this last session. So now I'll move to public comment. Uh, yes, we in the room, we, we always, uh, give preference to those who attend in person. Uh, so please identify yourself and, uh, make your comment.
Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. I'd like to go all the way back to the, um, uh, town managers, interim town managers' report regarding something that was kind of slid by, but I'd like to move a little more detail. The landmark recovery unit on Walden, $1.2 million. Uh, can you give us a little more information about what that unit is? Where it will be? And does the police department have any concerns about that installation?
So I didn't mean for it to slip by. I think I noted that this is, it's likely the first time we've talked about it at this level. But the staff has, has been extensively involved in this because this is a project that started in 2019. So it is located at the site of the former Walden Rehabilitation and Nursing Center. I don't have the exact address. I'm not sure if anybody on the board knows the exact address of that.
It's between 747 and 803 Main Street on the Route 2 side of Main Street.
Yeah, I think I wrote down from your report.
I'm sorry. It's in the report. I wasn't even looking. 785 Main Street. Um, and, and so this is a, let's see, did we say how many bids? So it is a, a private rehabilitation facility specializing in the treatment of substance abuse. Um, I can tell you it is something that is allowed under zoning and it has gone through the standard review process. And, and I know both of the, um, police department and fire department have commented on it throughout the, uh, review process.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, remarks from those, uh, on Zoom, I see a, a hand raised. I believe it's Tanya.
Yep.
Uh, so please unmute and identify yourself.
Hello, Tanya Gailis, 62 Prescott Road. Just, I just noticed that when Mr. Balger made his presentation, he, he, there was an omission about the tree removal remark that Gail Hayer made also. In addition to tree trimming, I don't know if that's two separate things or, I mean, it is two separate things. So I wanted to highlight the tree removal aspect of it too, because that, that resonated with me also when I read Gail's letter. Other than that, I want to thank you all for, you know, doing those meetings and those beautiful summer nights, taking the time off and doing this for us. Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. Uh, Jason, did you have a quick remark regarding that tree removal?
Uh, no, we, we'll incorporate tree removal and tree trimming in the same way. So we'll make sure that that gets addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate a tree removal will be required, uh, for this. Yeah. Okay. Any other, uh, public feedback? Yes. Please unmute, identify yourself. Yep.
Emma Liddrit, 13 Concord Green, first. Apologize for the outcry. I thought I was on mute. I wasn't. Embarrassed. I just want to point out that, um, a lot of these expenses that we're talking about are really investments that have payoffs that aren't kind of included in the same kind of way that we include when we, we, we talk about expenses that don't have broader social benefits. And on things like the electrification of the vehicle fleet, they also don't include the savings in healthcare and so on for, uh, mitigation of climate change that we actually will have for society as a whole. And that the American Lung Association has strongly urged the elimination of diesel school buses. There have been studies that demonstrate a reduction in IQ and an increase in asthma and other health issues in children, particularly from exposure to diesel emissions. So it isn't just a matter of economics. It's also a matter of immediate health. And there are also, um, programs to, uh, provide funding for electric school buses so that you don't have to pay the whole upfront cost all at once. And the, uh, the cost of ownership of the life of a bus is lower because of the savings on maintenance, not to mention fuel. And the fact that the electric buses last longer, don't need to be replaced as often. And there's a bunch of other considerations that also should be considered, but mainly the health of the children. Particularly, um, Metco kids who spend hours on there. And particularly short stop and go things like school buses do produce extreme more amounts of diesel emissions that are incredibly harmful to health. Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work. And I'm, I'm, I'm so enthusiastic that we have all these wonderful people running our town. Thanks.
Okay. Any other public, uh, comment before we close for the evening? Yes.
We need to do all those public hearings.
Ah, that's true. But we don't need to keep everybody else waiting for those.
Nope.
Um, so yes, we will now turn to the kind of more, uh, ceremonial aspect of our agenda, which is that the, uh, National Grid, um, was due to have, uh, the continued, uh, grant of petition for grant of petition, um, yeah, uh, uh, applications, uh, discussed this evening, but has request to continuance uh, to our July 11th meeting, I believe it is. And so, uh, we will now proceed through, uh, the, uh, continuation of each of those, continuance of for each of those.
Okay. So do we need to move to open each one of these public hearings?
And then move to continue.
Okay.
And, yeah.
There are only four.
Only four.
So that means only eight motions.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 470 feet of two inch coated steel, 1930 gas main with 470 feet of two inch plastic in Davis Court from Bedford Street to the end at number 47 Davis Court. Period.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need to read the whole thing?
Well, now I'm just going to say move to continue this public hearing until July 11th, 2022 at 6:40 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 250 feet of four inch plastic main in Lowell Road with approximately 250 feet of eight inch plastic main from the existing eight inch plastic main to house number nine 25 Lowell Road. Period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to continue this public hearing to July 11th, 2022 at 6:50 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location petition by National Grid to extend its existing two inch plastic main in Simon Willard Road approximately 450, 480 feet to serve an existing residence located at 398 Simon Willard Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to continue this public hearing to July 11th, 2022 at 7 o'clock PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now the really long one. Okay, now the really long one.
Thank you, National Grid.
Move to open the public hearing for the public hearing. Okay, move to open the public hearing for a grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 805 feet of two inch coated steel, 1930, and approximately 150 feet of two inch plastic, 2013, with approximately 955 feet of two inch plastic in Crescent Road from number 42 Crescent Road to the end of Main at number 138 Crescent Road. And to replace, to relay approximately 735 feet of two inch coated steel, 1930, with approximately 730 feet of two inch plastic in Hosmer Road from Neshoba Road to Crescent Road. And to relay approximately 710 feet of two inch coated steel, 1930, with approximately 710 feet of two inch plastic in Garland Road from Crescent Road to Neshoba Road. And to replay, to relay approximately 465 feet of two inch coated steel, 1957, with approximately 465 feet of two inch plastic in Wilson Road from Neshoba Road to the end of Main at number 59 Wilson Road. And to relay approximately 860 feet of two inch coated steel, 1957, with approximately 860 feet of two inch plastic in Neshoba Road from Hosmer Road to the end of Main at number 321 Neshoba Road. And to relay approximately 480 feet of two inch coated steel, 1930, with approximately 480 feet of two inch plastic in Neshoba Road from Garland Road to the existing two inch coated steel at number 144 Neshoba Road.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And move to continue this public hearing to July 11th, 2022 at 7:10 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I declare this meeting to be adjourned.
Yes.
Second.
Very good.
No need for a motion.
All right.
We have concluded the business for the evening. We do not have a meeting next week. Juneteenth holiday observed. And then we will be meeting next June 27th at 6:30 PM, I expect.
That will be on Zoom for that.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.